Good evening. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals, Plymouth, Massachusetts. We're in the Great Hall and we have one case and we have a little bit of other business to take care of. First, we want to do case number 2946, Energy North Group, and they're requesting a continuance. I will ask the clerk to read the letter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Letter dated April 17th, 2024, Zoning Board of Appeals, Town of Plymouth, 26 Court Street, Plymouth, Mass. Reference Energy North Incorporated informal zoning board of appeals hearing to address conditions eight and 20 of special permit case 2946 regarding Two Commerce Way Plymouth continuance request. Dear Chairman Maine, as you may know, I represent Energy North Incorporated concerning the above referenced project. The purpose of this letter is to request that the zoning board of appeals continue our public hearing currently scheduled for April 22, 2024 to July 15, 2024. The reason for the continuance request is that both the West Plymouth Steering Committee and the Planning Board had substantial feedback on the proposed project at Two Commerce Way, which have caused Energy North to rethink the design and likely adjust it substantially. After redesign, Energy North will then need to appear again before the Planning Board before moving on to the ZBA. Further, Energy North has requested, has been requested by the DPW to perform a traffic study, which will take at least six weeks. I am unable to attend the April 22 meeting due to a travel plans that predate my engagement by Energy North, so I cannot present this continuance request in person with apologies. However, should you have any questions or require any additional information, please do not hesitate to contact me. Thank you for your assistance and cooperation. Rob D'Ambrosio.
Thank you, Mr. O'Reilly. This is unusual in one sense of the word that we are sending this back to the Planning Board because of condition number 20. So I will ask for a motion to continue?
Question?
Yes.
Is this the corner lot across the market basket?
Yes.
It is the corner. We always thought there might be a gas station. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I await a motion.
A motion that we continue, wait a minute. A motion that we continue case 2946 till
July 15th.
July 15th?
Yes.
2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Mr. Leary to continue this case to July 15th. You know, order for the petitioner to go back to the Planning Board and work out some of the details. And it is seconded by Kevin. All those in favor. It is unanimous. Now, moving on to case 4112, Sean D'Ambrosio. And I will ask the clerk to read the advertisement into the record, please.
Case number 4122. The Plymouth Zoning Board of Appeals on the zoning bylaw will hold a public hearing in the Great Hall, Town Hall, 26 Court Street, Plymouth, Mass. on Monday, April 22nd, 2024 at 7:00 PM to hear the petition of Sean D'Ambrosio requesting a special permit required per section 203-2.b.2.d.2.b. to waive development site boundary and per section 205-5, R-20SL dimension table to waive required setbacks side, required side setbacks to construct a retaining wall parking area on the property of 128 Summer Street, shown as Lot 20 on plat 18 of the assessor's map dated January 1, 2023 in the R20S zone. The petitioner or his or her representative and any other person desiring to be heard on this matter should appear at the time and place designated.
Thank you, Mr. O'Reilly. Who seated on this will be Mr. Leary, Mr. O'Reilly, Mr. Conroy, Mr. Connor, and myself. Who will be representing? Is the green light on?
It is now. Kevin Grady from Grady Consulting. I'm here along with my associate Dylan Brady, who helped prepare the plans, and we're representing the applicant, Sean D'Ambrosio, for the special permit request before the board. The project, as you read into the opening, is a special permit to, for development site boundary except is allowed by special permit. This, this lot is a small lot. It's 9,000 square feet. It's in the R20SL zoning district. The house was constructed in 1835. As you know, this area, all the houses are pretty close together. There's significant parking issues associated with a bunch of the residents here. What the applicant would like to do is to construct a parking area in the rear of his house to improve parking and maneuverability on the site. As it stands now, there's two small spaces in the front right corner of the property, and you have to back out onto Summer Street, or you have to pull ahead and back in. What he is proposing to do is to construct a reasonably sized parking area that will accommodate approximately eight vehicles and will also accommodate turning and turning completely around so that you are exiting the property nose out first, which is a significant improvement over backing out. The other thing that it will help is they won't park in that location anymore, so the abutters to the west who currently park adjacent to these vehicles will be able to see across this portion of the driveway when they have to back out. They won't be blocked by our client's vehicles. If you, let's see, I got a new light. So currently, they park approximately right, right there, and the neighbor to the west parks right there. So in order for this neighbor to see out in this direction, if there's vehicles parked right in that location, then they have to look through the vehicles and they cannot. The idea now is to move, to park out back and leave this area empty. The owner actually is a contractor and drives a pretty large pickup truck, which makes it even more difficult. The site, the reason people park there is because all these sites slope down severely from the road down to the town brook. The site drops approximately 40 feet at elevation 74, 72 at the road, down to 34 at the brook. In order to accommodate this construction, the applicant needs to build up the rear yard and contain it. The only way to do that is to bring in retaining walls. We've lowered them as much as possible with severe slope that's there, and we've got the walls down to about 10, down to 10 feet and below. And that's the reason for the special permit request. The, allowing the special permit will significantly improve the maneuvering and will improve safety in the, you know, for access to these couple of these buildings here. We've been, before the Conservation Commission, and we have an order of conditions. We've been through all the departments and have addressed engineering comments. We were at the Planning Board last week, and they had a few comments that they asked us to address. I have added those to the most recent set of plans, and they basically include showing the fence on the top of the wall. Our detail had a fence, but the plan did not show a fence there. They wanted us to more clearly show the bitcon berm to contain the drainage on the lot. The applicant is constructing stormwater system, catch basins, and subsurface infiltration that will infiltrate stormwater. So everything is from this parking area pitches to the catch basins and then down through subsurface stormwater. So there'd be no increase in flow of stormwater to the abutting properties. It'll probably actually reduce it in this vicinity. So we addressed those. The Planning Board also asked for a landscape plan. If you can, can you switch to sheet two? It's a very simple landscape. Or can I do it? All right. We also added a second sheet and scaled up the plan so it was easier to read. There's not a lot of area to provide landscaping plans, but basically, we added plantings in the front of the building. The Planning Board really wanted some plantings along the edges of this new driveway, so we have some inkberry and some perennials in those areas to kind of break the pavement between the two. We also added some notes to loam and seed any disturbed areas around the perimeter. What we're trying to do is keep the existing grade along the outside that's there now and just put in stone strong retaining walls to raise the elevation and flatten it so we can make a parking lot. Familiar with stone strong, the large segmental blocks, gravity wall, they're quite common and very efficient for constructing something like this. So as you know, special permits may be granted with reasonable discretion of the Special Granting Permit Authority, you guys. As authorized in this bylaw, subject to the termination of the following conditions for such special permit have been met. And the standards for those include the proposed use is consistent with the purpose and intent of the district in which the subject land is located. It's residential use now, proposing a residential use. They just want to improve parking. Adequate facilities will be provided for safe harmonious exercise of the special permit use. It's not a special permit use, but we are providing adequate facilities, particularly parking and stormwater. No hazard to pedestrians or vehicles will be created. We're trying to improve that. That's the purpose of this project, and I think what the owner wants to do will certainly accomplish that. No nuisance or adverse effect on the neighborhood will be created. Again, I think it's going to be an improvement for safety. We've incorporated stormwater. We've incorporated some landscape. I think the application and the proposal that the owner would like to do meets the special permit standards, and we'll kindly request approval and happy to take any questions if you have them.
Do we, we, we don't have these revised plans, do we?
See, we have one set. I have a set of plans here.
The new ones?
We don't have the revised.
Yeah.
No. We don't have the revised plan or the landscape plan.
I apologize for that. We, we were at the Planning Board last week and my, I did the revisions the very next day, but my landscape architect didn't do them till today, and I emailed them over as soon as I received them, and I forgot to print you guys some.
Yeah, that doesn't, doesn't really help us very much. But can I ask a couple of questions?
Please.
How much fill do you have to bring in there? What would you guess?
So we are going from zero feet at the front end to 10 feet, and it's over, I don't have a scale plan here. It's over approximately 40 feet. Did we calculate that at all? I, I don't have that answer for you.
Okay. Is it, I mean, is it just a couple truckloads or a dozen truckloads?
It's probably more like a dozen.
A dozen, okay. So I noticed that you have a couple of nice signs on the one plan that I looked at. Has, is there any consideration of having a police detail there?
Yes. That was a comment from the Engineering Department, and
Oh, I didn't see that. Okay.
It's on the sheet here. We have a note right there that says a detail could be, town could require a police detail if necessary.
Okay. Because I know, I don't know about these guys. Michael and I drive by that all the time from West Plymouth, and it's, it's kind of a hellhole even without any construction. I can't picture a 12, whatever, 10-wheel truck trying to back in there to dump dirt without a cop nearby. Okay. That, that's all I had. I was curious about the plan.
Yeah, I do have a few things. I mean, one of the things that, I, I saw it on you with the Planning Board, and actually, I forget what the condition it is. Hold on a second. Where they say landscaping both sides and along both sides of the driveway entrance. I was, I'd like to eliminate. I don't really think we should be adding landscaping out there for the same thing, vision. It's too close to the road. I mean, you know, that, there's no room there, you know? So I was, I don't know how the board feels, but I was going to ask that that, one, that that would be eliminated. Plus, I noticed on that, there's no fence on the side towards the building, right? Correct?
Correct, on the building, yeah.
But isn't there a two-foot space that, between the building and the actual access road?
Yes, right in, sorry, right in this area here.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
Now, yes, exactly. That's what I was going to say. I was, instead of a fence, I was thinking we should put some ballots there, you know what I'm saying? So that they can't hit the building.
Okay.
Then the other thing is, is I'd like to have the corner of the back of the parking lot on the right-hand side would probably be the best place, designated for a place where you store the snow during the winter, because I would, rather than pushing the snow over the wall at any point, I, I, because let's face it, I was looking at the orientation to the sun. They'll probably be throwing salt on the access road or something, and I, I wouldn't want that snow to be pushed over the wall. So I'd like something designated in that corner.
Sure, we can add a note or condition, or, I think they have difficulty pushing it over since they are going to buy a chain link fence that's going to wrap around this whole section. There'll be an opening there at the entrance to these stairs, but then again, it wraps all the way around here. So they won't be able to push that off of the parking lot without damaging their fence. Not that they won't do that.
In the condition, in the conditions, I'm going to have to be put in that to store it, you know, that it be stored on the space, so it has to go through the infiltrators. That's all.
Understood.
And I don't know how the rest of the board feels about it. I don't think the landscaping on both sides of that entrance is appropriate at all. I notice, like, I mean, you're basically, you've got a 7% on the access. You're allowed 10%, so you're under that. The walls, you're allowed 12 foot. You're only at nine feet. So, you know, I think everything else, to me, is fine.
Anything else?
I, I walked by there yesterday, and actually, it is, it is very tight, so I have no problem if you take, take that landscaping out. It's, it's a tight lot. Do you have any update on the structural engineer progress on the wall? I see that as a condition.
We did send that out to our structural engineer. I have not received it back. If we could get a condition on that, I, it's a standard gravity wall. We've moved the stormwater away from the wall. Concern from engineering is that the pore pressure, if it was close to the wall, would put forces on there, but we moved it 10 feet away in the good sandy soils that we have here. There's, we don't anticipate any pore pressure or any issues. I'm actually surprised that I didn't receive that today.
No. Well, my, I had a question about the structural engineer. I mean, my experience is a lot of times we had to get a geotechnical engineer involved. Your gravity wall, it's about nine inches, nine inches, you know, towed in, and you've got 10 feet of soil that you're holding back, and your structural engineer might say something about it, but you, because your, the diagram that you have here, the detail's got a disclaimer, so it's not site-specific. And that's what my experience is. I had to, I had to get a geotech engineer to, you know, look at global stability.
Yeah, so they'll, the, the structural will, will look at that, and what they'll probably do is add some geo grid behind the wall that, that'll tie it back from overturning. So the geo grid goes between the blocks. It's great in tension. If the, if the wall tries to overturn, the weight of the soils will, will hold that from overturning. And in this case, it's also a rectangle, so it's, it's supported in, in a few different ways. It's just not a straight, straight wall. So there'd be a geo grid coming in, and that's exactly what they're going to look at. This wall design almost never changes. The difference is how much geo grid do you need? And that's what they'll look at.
No, you're right. Geo grid is what you'd end up doing. The only other comment I have is what was said about the, the plantings. I mean, if you have shrubs up right at the sidewalk, at some point, they may grow that's going to, you know, stop your line of sight. So I don't think it's, I think it's a dangerous thing to have the landscaping up.
Plus, the reason I was going to ask have removed is the ones especially on the right-hand side, if you're looking at it, is going to cut the turning radius to go in. Now, if the neighbor, let's say, somebody's coming down the road and he has to ditch in there quick, right now, he can pull into his driveway and then back sideways. Wouldn't be able to do that there. I just think it's a bad, like you say, even the sidewalk. I think not enough room out there.
Thank you, Moser.
Okay. Any other questions for board members? All right. What I'm going to do is open the public comment, and seeing none, this crowd is, is very, very cooperative this evening. I'm going to close public comment, and this is going to be for board discussion and the petitioner only. And I'm going to start right off by saying, you've heard some of the questions here. You are not prepared this evening. We need to have the engineers' report. We need to have the amount of fill that's going in there. We need to have a landscaping plan and a site plan, and all of those things need to be in our packet a week before the next hearing.
So, sorry, engineer's report being the structural engineer?
You want that structural engineer's report. We want the amount of fill that's going in there. We'd want to know about the landscaping. I, it's good that you didn't give us a landscaping plan because it apparently is going to change. We certainly want a revised site plan with all of these things on it. Is there anything else, gentlemen, that you would like?
So when you say the landscaping, we'll just take the landscaping plan you showed because I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but we might be taking it on.
So if I prepare it, then you would condition that it not be constructed?
Yeah, within our conditions.
Yeah. Okay. That's fine. I'll just keep what we have. I, I agree with you. I discussed that with the Planning Board, but the Planning Board is referring info to you. I'm in the middle. So.
Welcome to our world.
You could just, you could just cut a couple of trees back there, too. They don't, well, on that right side?
Yes.
I mean, I don't personally care one way or the other, but you were worried about somebody driving in there. I'm just saying, they don't have to come right all the way out to the sidewalk, that's for sure, the trees.
But I don't see any reason for any of them being out there.
Well, it's to divide two people's property, that's all.
But the petitioner or isn't the one requesting it? The Planning Board. I, I don't, I definitely don't think it should be there, especially for turning radius, everything. It just doesn't make sense. When I was going to make the condition, suggestion on the condition, I was going to leave the landscaping on the rear side, though, you know, because it is a nine-foot wall. That's no problem. Yeah, just take it off. It says on both sides of the entrance, and I was going to take that on, or try.
Also, on that plan, we want to see ballots along the building.
Okay.
Or a fence, you actually.
I will discuss that with the owner.
Yep.
How long do you anticipate this will take you to get this information, this material for us?
I could have it to you in less than a week, by the end of the week. The only one that's out of my control is the structural engineer's report. My structural, the structural engineer's been very responsive, so.
May 6th is, so, May 20th?
That's fine.
Okay.
There's still a lot of work preparing to price all this and mobilize, so May 20th is fine. This wasn't going to happen overnight.
And to reiterate what Mr. Connor said, I do believe a police detail is need there, needed there. And I really want to know where you're going to park construction vehicles. I went there today, this morning, to look at that, and I was going to have to park down the street in a, in a parking lot and walk back to look at it. It, you're right, both of you guys. That's a dangerous little section. So yes, if we can help these people get it, their, their exit and, and egress and all of that stuff figured out and make it safer, fine. But we also want to know, what are you going to do with the construction workers?
Sure.
And how's that going to be handled?
Okay. So the owner is a site contractor who plans on doing this himself. He has all that heavy equipment. I'm sure he's going to need a laborer, though. Obviously, they need to park somewhere. And I will talk with him about that, what their strategy is. We do have a construction entrance. That'll be a crushed stone construction entrance proposed right here. You're only going to have small 10-wheelers be able to bring in material here. It's, you're not going to have tri axles or anything. So there's going to be enough room for them to park in this location, dump until they keep filling and filling and filling. So they'll probably deliver the block, stack them as they come in, and then they'll bring in the fill, is how that'll work. So they'll do some minor excavating for the wall base, which the wall base is basically a crushed, compacted crushed stone. Then they'll bring in the first layer of block and build it up slowly, and then they will bring in some fill and then construct this.
Not to, to belittle or anything, but it's "they" that I'm worried about. How many "they" are there? Because for every two, there's at least a vehicle. You know, so if he's got a crew of four or five guys, there's going to be two or three more vehicles. Where are they going to put them?
I have a note here, where will "they" park? And I will talk with him about what their, what size crew he plans on using.
Just as long as those, those provisions are made.
Yep.
And thought of, because, boy, oh, boy, I was surprised when I went down there.
What a, what a tight spot to have to do construction work in.
So, anything else? So, anything else, gentlemen?
It gets tied up there a lot because somebody parks halfway up on the sidewalk, right? And two people can't get around it, it's just brutal right there.
Yeah, I was gonna park on, you know, like that, but I was afraid my car would get hit.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Well, you're, you're 25 years younger than me. All right, I await a motion.
I'll make a motion that we continue case 4122, May 20th, '24, with the items that you have advised the applicant of to be presented at least, what is it, a week ahead of time? We need those a week, at least a week ahead of time in our hands.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Connor and a second by Mr. Leary to continue this hearing to May the 20th in order for them to be able to come back with information that we've requested. And it will be a structural engineer's report, the amount of fill that we're going to have, landscaping plan, site plan, parking for construction, and flagman or, or, what do they call? Yeah, we don't allow flagmen in this.
No.
Yeah, yeah, I remember, Peter. A, a traffic cop.
Okay.
And on that site plan, we wanna see where you're putting the bollards along the building, where you're gonna store material overnight, like.
It's gonna be right in that backyard.
Okay, anything else, gentlemen? All those in favor? It is unanimous. We will see you May the 20th.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you. Yes, yes. Let me show you. Okay, we have a little bit of stuff to, some minutes to read, and we'll be out of here. So the minutes for March 18th. Has everybody got a copy? Any additions, subtractions, changes, errors? I ask for a motion on March the 18th, minutes.
A motion that we accept the minutes of March 18th?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? It is unanimous. The minutes for April the 1st. Any additions, subtractions, corrections? I've read them today, I'm all good. Anything, gentlemen? I await a motion.
I motion that we accept the minutes of April 1st.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? It is unanimous, with one abstention. That concludes the business for this evening. I wanna thank everybody, and sweet pea, I'll be home soon.